Okay.
Okay. Welcome to Budget 20, 2021 Budget. Today's date is July 20th of 2020. It's, I show 1:07 PM. And just like everything else in 2020, our budget process is going to be different. Just a reminder to everybody that we are being streamed on YouTube. And so, we'll go ahead and start today. I've got my agenda, our time schedule. And so, if we want to look at it first thing for this week, today, Melinda will direct us on the Walkin' with Jeff. Beginning at 9:00 AM tomorrow. And Wednesday, we'll meet with departments either by Zoom or in person. Or I've told Melinda, she tells me there's not a whole lot of changes that have been requested. So, we're also giving those elected officials or department head, they don't have to come. I mean, if they go leave their budget like this, then they don't need to Zoom or they don't need to even come and make an appearance. And so, all right, Melinda, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. And we'll do that Monday and Tuesday, Thursday, what's sort of a catch-up date?
Thursday will be to continue with the budget, going through the stuff that's not departmental.
Okay. And then Friday, we'll do the same, if we need to, we'll do the same every day. All right, Melinda, you go ahead and start us today.
I guess we'll just start with the revenues. Page one of your worksheets, your budget worksheet. And we'll go down to the middle where it's intergovernmental revenue. And we'll start with the state of Texas liquor tax is where we'll start. Judge, we'll just go.
Okay.
No, I just left the requested budget the same.
Okay.
But.
Well, of course, this whole budget cycle is going to be unique in that with everything that has happened the last four months. You know, usually this time of the year, we have six months to go back up on to see where we're at. But actually this year, we're only going to end up about two months. That was what you'd consider normal months because the first part of March is when everything went COVID. All this, and so, we, you know, our numbers are going to be reflective because we just hadn't done or spent the money that normally we would have, you know?
Well, in some cases, would we be better to go back to last year's budget and do that? Wouldn't that be more accurate than what?
We'll probably, we'll probably look at that 2019 actual and see, and maybe judge somewhere along in that.
Well, I'm on the very first one, the state of Texas liquor tax. That, that right there is just the first quarter.
I can't believe that's not going to be up, to be honest with you.
So, that's just the first quarter, so.
Okay.
That, that's probably going to change.
Then I would say based upon 2019 actual of 37, let's just leave that point. The second one is the special salary supplement, is that like a set amount or? How do you talk to 109,200?
That's a judge, judge. Those are, yeah, supplement to the, to the, to the.
Right, so 192 there. The next one's the tobacco settlement, is that also percent?
You're not that far from 18, 19, or 20, they're pretty much the same.
Yeah.
I think you did 25.
All right, let's leave that at 25. Tax, dot, wait, and actual fees. On the camera. Actually, we're pretty close to so far what we've got this year, so let's leave that at 110. What is the 225 on the turd and motor vehicle sales tax?
Okay, remember, this is the one that, that's rolling. Look that high.
We look like we might be a little short in here. At least, you've got 138.5 so far. And so, you know, that'll figure out to about one, 275.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to pass this out. And this is going to tell us on the last column, like the students on this report.
Take the, the plastic fan on each side of it, take that off.
Okay, on the.
This is got two.
And it's all the, judge, on the last column, it said that it was those numbers. And I'll send it from, Terry, can you come over yours, please? Just real quick.
And there's another, it's like that. Yeah, we've got an extra.
Okay, good, good. Um, what I, what I tried to do here, Judge, is the total on the report that I, this is actual total by office as we can see, okay? And you'll notice on the column, it'll tell you best experience, but then if it's done quarterly, it'll tell you, I mean, is it quarterly or two quarters already? And it just depends on the timing of the report. So, if you'll reference back to your question.
The turd one?
Yes.
Uh, it's showing that's the one year?
Yes. So, we only get it annual, okay? And I believe more than we get it like around April or so, so.
So, we were quite a bit down in the F N.
Yes.
The regular taxes?
Pull the film off that. I did both sides?
Is he looking back to that?
I think he got one side there.
So, that's missing a regular tax.
There was one on that side too.
Yeah, he's going back to the turd. I thought he was looking at.
Kind of hard to type to do there.
Were you looking at the very first one?
Turd, on the turd.
No, I didn't see that.
32 a week. About that.
209,000.
So, I guess we need to adjust that down.
Is that through the regular tax, Judge, you're going, or that's probably cars?
You know, I had no.
No, all of that's money that comes into the bank. But two years.
But is it based on car sales and stuff?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you what it is, I just have to ask.
Okay.
I know we've asked it several times what it is, but.
It's car sales. You know, there's stitches, stitches, a sock or something?
Well, it looks like, you know, our past history, like in 2019, it was 208. And I guess for this last year, it's been 138.
In 2018, it was 247.
Yeah, it took.
248.
I think we probably need to mark out and down some. Maybe, what do you think about 170?
Well, it's kind of a guess, but that's probably as good a guess as you're going to get, realistic.
And that's, that's it, isn't it? I mean, that's it.
Yeah.
That's it, yeah.
Let's do 175.
175?
Emergency management homeland, nothing on land, buying reimbursement from O A G.
Okay.
We're showing 18, 619.
Well, what I did was right now, that's what it is for this year. I don't have the figures yet on what it'll be for 2021. It may go up a little bit, but that no longer used to funds and we had to disperse them. We just had to, I just had to do the quarterly reports and send them in. But now, we actually have to request that reimbursement. It comes back to us, we pay it, it comes back to us. And that's why there's an amount there, because in the last several years, we haven't had to. But I have a feeling it's probably going to go up a little bit, I just don't know how much.
So, if they put 20 there, would be all right?
Yeah, probably if we did that. And then once we get it, once I know what that is, if it, you know, I'll adjust it. Because it'll be an exact amount.
Let's put it at 20. The housing of prisoners, of course, that's going to be, it's always a crapshoot, but this year's going to really be because we haven't held hardly any.
It's going to be way down.
Because of the COVID, you know, they're not transferring people around and things like that, so. This shows for three months, we've had 22 that. And I, I put 125 there.
Pretty nice, but.
So, what is it? State comptroller cash force? And mat charges is 28, so far this year is 18, 30.
Pretty, pretty good.
And that's two quarters. So, we might be a little under there, why don't we put about 38? Okay, charges for services, county judges fee. What, where's that generated from? What would that be?
So, it's any fee that, Judge, that you assess that you collect from your court, that it's in all the consolidated fees that whatever you assess a fine, that you're saying.
Okay. So, all of those will be down because of the inactivity of the court.
Most likely.
For a year, so. Let's see. For 19, there was only 68. Let's put five on that. County sheriff's fees, 82, so far 23. That's for six months. 47? We want 71. What do we put? What do you think about 60 now?
I think 60 is a figure, come to my mind, obviously.
Because we got to remember that this will be for next year, hopefully by January, it'll be somewhat back to that. So, like.
So, 60?
County clerk fees, let's say that a thousand. That's five months worth. The next one is 58, and that's five months, and we're at 165. It has been 168 in the past, so. Let's, uh, let's put 160 there.
160?
Yeah.
We're at 58, I think.
Yeah, but the other years have all been close to 160 something, so. Yeah. Supplemental guardian fees, I guess so far we got 1220. So, let's put that one at 2500. Administration fees, trust, that 587 is for three months, so. Maybe about 2,000.
That's three months, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 2,000.
District clerk fees, 64, that is for five months. Let's put 160 on the F N.
16?
Constable fees, precinct one, 17,000, he's at 6615. That's about where he was in that team. Why don't we put that at about 15?
Is that five months, too, Judge, again?
Uh, let's see, yes. And same for constable, break, it's five months, he's got 1985. In 19, he hit five. He's sitting at 45, let's leave that at 4500. Sale of voter registration list, I guess you just leave that at 200. Title applications, we had 35. So far, we're at 137. That's five months. Get about 30, maybe, so. Let's split it, let's do 32,500. All right, motor vehicle commissions, we got 90 on there so far this year, it's 36, 406. And that's five months. Or, I'm sorry, it's 39, 40, 14 after five months, so. Why don't we put that one at 75? We have zero on that one. County clerk trial fees, let's go ahead and leave that at 800. Family protection fees, let's leave that at 500.
If you need a county clerk video, give it a.
County clerk video at 800. Uh, the sheriff work relates that's at the, uh. Justice of the peace fees, we had 170 so far this year, we got 50, that's five months. So, it's about 10,000, running about 11, 10 or 11,000 a month. So, let's put that at about 130. Of course, some of those fees are those from like their tickets and stuff. And those are going to be down because a lot of our B P S troopers, they're still have been sent to other locations, so. Like I said, they're not out and about like they have been, so.
130.
We put 130. Justice of the peace, number three fees, 250, so far we got 83, that's for five months. Let's leave that one about 230. Special court cost administration, 25,000, we're at 69, 57, that's after five months. Let's leave that, or let's move that one down to about 20. D A criminal court cost and fees, at 9,000, it's been so far at 1346. In 19, it was 5500, so, uh, let's move that one to 6,000. Due initial support fee, the county fee. Let's put that one at 1500. And I'm throwing these numbers out, if any of y'all, maybe any other thoughts or whatever, just let me know. Let's see, the next one is the restitution fee. So far, it's been $26, it's not been 180, so let's leave it at 180. The rest, or C C consolidated court fee, let's leave that at zero.
Judge, let me say that about the next one. I'm sorry, I'm going to address that. Okay, those are, the state comptroller came in and did some consolidating on some fees based on when they were, well, they're different. They could be based on date of offense, and they could be just, uh, dates, somebody help me here. Another number, pardon? Date of offense, the consolidation, it was based on.
Yeah, it, it goes by the, uh, judgment date in, in the two court, three courts, higher courts. The lower courts, they go by September 1st.
Okay, so, it's on, uh, the J P's are based on the fiscal year. But what I'm saying here is this, this is our first year doing it this way, they just consolidated them.
Okay.
So, there, we don't have any experience as to what that's going to be, so it's what we actually.
So, you're saying we need to put some money in there?
I think so, but.
Yeah, because they're given, you know, they're taking it and they're saying, okay, the county gets this amount and the state gets that amount. That's how it's entered into the court cost.
Yeah, and like, you'll notice this, we're working on, by tangents, those are going to be, they consolidated local fees also. So, we don't have experience to base it on, that's what I'm trying to say. Okay. Because we don't, we don't know what those are going to be. I'm going to suggest that maybe we should leave that up to Melinda after we get at least two quarters in, which we're working on right now.
Okay.
I still need to, I haven't gotten all the enough reports from the departments, so.
Okay.
I'm working on that.
All right, then let's just bypass though. That'll take us to page two, uh, to fines and forfeiture, county clerk fees, or fines, I'm sorry. We have 8,000, year to date, we're at 16, 713. In 19, we're at 68, 707. That 16 is for five months.
What is the next five months, are they, are they going to be like that, or are we going to do better? Who knows?
Well, nobody knows, you know, until we have court.
But you think about it, in 2021, you're going to catch all those up, so your numbers will be quite a bit higher.
Yeah.
You would think.
Yeah, because all these are sitting, you're waiting to go to court.
True. Of course, we could have said that for all that we just went through, so.
Well, we put them up pretty good.
I thought it, but I didn't want to say it.
I think we got them up reasonably well, myself.
Then, uh, based on 2019, let's go ahead and, and put that at 75,000.
I think I drew the error on both sides anyway.
Okay, wind on antenna tower locate, is that still zero?
It's still zero.
Okay. Fire calls, we've put 7500, year to date, we've 96, 45. And in 12, or in 19, we spent 12, 6. So, now that's what we've recoked?
Yes.
Okay, so it's good that we've recoked more than we want.
How'd we did that? How'd we get so much back this year?
We buggered.
I'm thinking you did.
Well, if the right that is, uh, I think we'd be all right to put about 18 in there.
I think so. At least, yeah.
Fire calls?
Yes, sir. Because we've got 96 so far this year, so.
Judge, going back to that first item, I don't remember, ran on the tower. Isn't that the one that was here at the courthouse that used to be here, did we have something on that?
Is that one, or is it the one?
It was one at Hells End. I only get was the one at Hells End, but we don't, we don't have anything. We don't have anything either. We don't have anything on it.
Yeah, I knew we didn't have anything, I was just trying to, trying to think which one it was.
Well, I know we have, we're on contract on one of them. I don't remember.
Well, we pay.
Yeah, we pay.
We have to pay 22,000, 23,000.
That's the one west of Hells End.
Yes. And this will be our second year to pay it. I mean, in 21, we'll pay our second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
For the next 10 years.
And then the interest on the tax assessment collected, you got 850?
When did we end the firepower?
Would, would put it at 850. This one has, by now, we're about 900 and something, so let's put that one at, let's put it at about 1,000. Interest on investments, we put 250, so far we're at 22. Well, actually, this sheet here now, it shows we're at 86 after 61. Worth what? On the interest on investment? Our, our form that we got here in the budget shows 22 so far this year, but what Ida has calculated is 86, 085.
And I'll say this, Judge, there's something more.
Let's go up there.
A little look. I know what it is, we just, just this week, in solid, in reconciling due, the, the interest on the S E S account that are in the bank where they're sweeping it, the quarter just ended, so we just received it in the book. On it, and it just happened this, this, I wouldn't say it happened, I said this week, it's not this week, it probably happened in my commit. I think, I think it happened, and then it got done today, yeah, okay.
So, it's going to be for six months, I would say?
86, 085.
Yeah, that's two quarters. Two quarters, it's two quarters.
Yeah, well, six months, yeah.
It's been six months, yeah.
Well, so let's do. Let's do 175. Well, that's about what it's showing.
Yeah.
Uh, interest on district clerks, I guess that's zero. Interest on county clerks, so far this year is 52, it's been running anywhere from 199 to 390. We have it at 300, so let's move it to 250. Interest on district attorney, 200, it's right now 31. That's five months. Let's put it in at about 150. Insurance recovery, we got it at 50, so far this year, we're at 27, 6. In 19, we were at 81. Was 80, uh, 19 a hell year?
We were still fixing some of the building, probably.
Yeah, I think it was, I think we did.
There's also the tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it was this town, yeah.
That happened in January.
So, I think we'd be good leaving it at 50, I think so, too. Work and comp recoveries, that's listed as zero. Liquor fees and permit, we got 5,000, year to date is zero.
I don't think I'm at a certain point yet.
I think that may like August, something.
Maybe, I don't know if a lot of it's going to reopen.
Let's, let's leave it at five, it's never been below, I mean, the low we've had is 58, 26, so let's leave it at five.
What did the, the insurance recovery, Judge?
We did 50. Septic system inspection, we've got zero.
I'm sorry, did y'all leave that, was the thing that I?
Septic system inspections, he's got, uh, the first one I did was manu, well, I was at, was manufactured home inspection, that was zero. The septic system inspections, he's got it six thousand, he's already up to forty-four hundred, so we probably ought to move that one to about seventy-five. Flood plant inspection, he's at one seventy-five, it's up to one twenty, so we'll move that to fifty. Indigent healthcare reimbursement? Is that five thousand? We gotta set it five thousand, in that thing, it was thirty-one, two twenty.
Yeah, it, those just depend on whether they have Medicaid, and if we had to pay anything, their Medicaid will reimburse us.
So.
What we paid out, so it just depends on what.
Crack you down, do?
Yeah.
Let's leave it at five, yeah. Sale of assets, we put twenty-five thousand, we didn't get any. Of course, Jamie, with this included, car sales?
We did one, I think.
No, because that'll go back to the.
Department?
Department, just depends.
What would we sell in this?
I mean, anything that's not, uh, anything that's not for a specific department, or if it crosses yours. If it's something that's sold. If it's something that's sold, and.
When that thing, it was thirty-one thousand?
Because, uh, probably what happened was some of the sheriff's office did go back in that, because he didn't use it in the same year. You have to use it within the, if you, you have to use it within the same year, if it happens in the next year, then it has to go back into the general fund.
So, twenty-five thousand? No, no, is that five, no, it's five thousand.
Sell the assets?
Yeah, twenty-five. And we're gonna leave it at twenty-five?
I think so.
Okay, I want to, I just, I'm not very good using, let's see here. Olive line, there's, uh, twenty thousand, we're at twenty-three hundred. And, uh, that thing, it was one thing down, so I think we ought to drop that down at that least. That'd be twelve-five?
It needs, yeah.
Twelve-five, good.
Yes, sir. Olive line, there's center parking fees, we got ten thousand, so forward, that's thirty-three, fifty-eight. And that thing, we're at eighty-two, seventy-seven, so I'm thinking one seventy-five hundred.
Yes, sir.
Uh, rent of Knox's sweep, I don't know, he says zero. Uh, pays on commissions?
Uh, I don't know, well, the Knox's sweep deal, well, he not even moved back in the arm? He's back, yeah, he wanted to put his pickup back in, or so.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. So, we did, since he moved back in?
Um, he moved back in, I don't know, I don't, I don't.
He made back in?
I think the last year. Yeah, since I moved ago? He threw a bit, he, uh, he felt that moved him out, but he didn't back in, you know, and we went back there four minutes, and he couldn't, he wasn't working the way he can, so. Yeah, we, cause he moved back in, we, so he, he played the rent, I don't follow, well, that's, that's our fault.
How much, uh? And he didn't pay it up, it's gonna pay the name?
Was there a hundred dollars in the month?
I don't know.
What happened to the rent last morning, or what, it wasn't a lot at all?
I guess the mortgage stuff, I could've looked it up. I didn't learn a lot, I think he might have been, what he, uh?
Might have moved back in?
Why don't we go ahead and put twelve hundred, and you hook, and here's the rule.
Well, wouldn't that's a few that does for, talking ball?
There you go, all right. Pay on commission, we got it forty, so forward, we're at eleven, eight twenty-five. It's been anywhere from thirty-one to thirty-nine. You know, the jail population couldn't weigh down. And I, I hope not counting they, even our own, you know, and so, uh, we might drop it maybe down to thirty-two, but I wouldn't drop it a whole lot.
I'm paying a hundred dollars.
Okay. All right, uh, miscellaneous fund refund, the revenue, we got that ten, and so before year-to-date, we're fourteen, oh, nineteen, nine.
Look, that's just, uh.
It just depends on what, I mean, we never, if it's something that doesn't fall in another revenue category, that's where it ends up, isn't it? I mean, we never know what that.
It's, it's never been this high.
Yeah, it tells you.
That's pretty wild.
Did you hear some of that radio stuff that we got?
Uh-huh, it's never.
Refund dollars?
It's already lost.
Insurance stuff? So, the camera that was in, I don't know if it's for a while?
Yeah, well, i- if it crosses years, and, and the, uh, if it crosses years, and, and we're collecting in the new year versus, for the old year, then we put it in miscellaneous revenue, cause you can't, if we interpreted it in the current budget, it increases the budget by that much, so that's where we put it. But it could be a lot of things, you know, if, uh, uh,
I mean, I'm looking at it right here, and it's just different things, there's some, it looks like some personal loss stuff is going in there.
Well, what it, what that is, I can tell you is that we got a reimbursement for unemployment this year, and because it was for the prior year, I have received, how much was it, one?
I don't know, there's different ones, there's people.
And, uh?
Yeah, so it just depends on what we get the money, if, you know, those states go, it's like medical bills, they go behind, uh, as far as buildings, so if we get reimbursed, I can't put it in the worker comp, it's gonna increase the budget, and so in order for me, for us to keep the books right, we throw it into miscellaneous revenue, so it's not affecting the current budget.
The biggest thing that we in there this year is, uh, it was when we get our social pension building, and because we didn't receive those checks until after I closed out the new year, those payments for December have the earlier.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So it just depends.
Went down to about sixteen? Well.
It's already gonna hold fourteen, but yeah, probably because there's room nowhere to get it.
Yeah. All right, for six sixteen. Long-term funds and things is zero. Carryover from previous year, zero. Okay, the transfer of funds, uh, we all have zeros, that, right, though? All right, page three. We need thirty-two.
We need to move right on, page three.
Yeah.
Andrew?
I guess they won't, you think, we'll send it, two thousand and a dollar, I can't, I can't do this.
Man, it's, it's.
You got, you didn't catch the little slot, I think, yeah.
Okay. Okay, then, number three, these are judges, general fund.
I should, but you don't, you're doing it now?
You're doing it now? Yeah.
I mean, what he wants, if you are, if you have to start the question.
Yeah, let's do the question. I just, I gave advice on, uh, that thing, because I thought this year, we have sent out thirty jury, I mean, or we hadn't sent out any jury houses, and very few appearance houses or everything like that, so let's leave it at twelve hundred. But like Carla said, once we get out and, and going, we'll, we'll send out a little, so. We're on page three, right in the middle, supplies.
So it's good for.
Yeah, right, right now, we won't do the salaries.
We never do the salaries stuff, you know?
Tell me that.
Uh, office supplies, uh, I'll let that, well, I'll put that five. Machine maintenance is gonna be right around break. Subscriptions, uh, next year is a, is it legislative year, so I'll say that five hundred. Uh, the settlement, you're on zero. Uh, subsequent judge expenses, I'll put it at five hundred. Contract items, we'll put zero. Telephone, I guess I need to put that back down from ninety-six fifty. Oh, no, I put twelve hundred.
Usually that's where they're at.
Is that for five?
Let me double check.
Five hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. He was always six hundred, is that, or what?
No, that is just your, uh.
Cell phone?
Your cell phone, it's not that.
Okay, so it shouldn't be twelve hundred each?
Six oh one is what it's supposed to be.
I think, uh, the, they have had a long stretch, and then probably did come down.
Okay. Six oh one, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, conference seminars and those, let's leave it the same. The only one they hadn't canceled on was a couple, and they'll be, I don't know, I don't know, so.
Someone leaving him?
Yeah. Uh, the mileage, that's leading it at a thousand. Advertisements, Mr. K's, five hundred. The barn, Mr. K's, I don't know where the dog is still, so, I don't know. Uh, public officials, library with seventeen. I ain't got a notice or a one other, so. And, more women? Yeah, seventeen. Uh, the awards and recognition, I bumped that up, five hundred based on twenty nineteen, expenditures, so let's leave it at two thousand. Office equipment, uh, let's go ahead and put that back at five.
Fifty-five or five twenty?
Five.
Why, why did you go back on the?
Well, I, I think Rosio is going to, uh, look for some stuff for her office, but I told her to go ahead and look for it this year. The dollars, the money we have, in fact, we'll have left her in the budget, so I think it should get lots of them, and it should, so we can take that one back. I just don't want to cut it all the way back, because we need a, a computer or something, or somebody. And then that's, that's it on page three. Okay, page four, uh, I guess we'll skip that one. Do we skip that one, Alinda?
Yeah, we'll skip that one.
Uh, page five.
Should we skip to the parking station, change, make, start to move them? On bench, I hope you will leave that. You're just doing nothing?
Page five, uh, uh, supplies in what they call the county judge commissioner court fund. I guess that would be anything for us to pull on. Let's talk about that just a second, Carla, if we go back to, if we get to go back to having court downstairs, and we need something to continue for it to be on YouTube?
Mm-hmm.
What's that gonna cost us?
Well, if we're taking this down, that's.
Not good, okay. All right, then let's leave that miscellaneous fund at a hundred dollars. The investment training.
That's for the investment training.
Is everybody getting paid out of this, or what's it being, eighteen, not seventy thousand?
Well, now, there's, uh, Harold, Judge, Alinda, and myself, there's four of us.
I'll pay mine, I'll have mine, but I should, no?
Right, only three can ask.
Three.
So, so y'all two get paid out of this one?
We did, the three of us.
Get paid out of this one?
Yeah.
The three's okay?
But not, I'll pay mine, I'll have mine.
Okay. We never done it that way, that's why that's, uh?
Ten thousand?
Out of the invest, the investment training's always come out of here.
Well, I thought I paid it, I, I just said I'm, I appreciate it.
No, if you were on the committee, it came out of here.
No, we can't.
But you, you might say, but it was like that, for, for, I mean, I mean, we're for starting. We're not for starting?
Yeah, well, we, we're still talking here.
There's thirty people.
Yeah. Let it just slide in, train, or travel, we won't. Other than, we'll whip up that out of our other fees, uh, when we go, and they just let it come.
Yes.
Uh, office equipment, the only office equipment we got in there would be our recorder, and I think it's all, it's a good shot, or something. Probably make that to fifty. Okay, uh, page six. General fund county clerk.
This one we might not wanna do till we meet with her, on her leaving day.
Special project, what's that?
The same thing.
He's gonna do it all. You want me to see if he wants to come back?
He's good.
He's gotta go pick, he's gotta go pick up the supplies from Homeland Security.
I know, but he's made on schedule, all right, so we.
Yeah, but he kinda.
What day is he going on?
He kinda told me, he was during his time, he was first season, and he was gonna kill Amber, like, he, and he's gonna have to send somebody with him.
I want to, and come down close, and some, I'm gonna find some, yeah.
Let me go.
Do you know where in rooms is, is it nine forty-five?
He needs to be at nine forty-five, and he told me he had to do that well, I might get ten of them.
Yeah. His room take long for doing.
Thank you, Rosio, we're gonna next door next to.
Okay. So, I'll sit right there?
Hi, Judge.
Rosio?
My name is.
Hey, would you go over there and see if, uh, if Lido's there, and if he is telling, if he wants to come down, we can do his budget now?
Yes, sir, I'll be down right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye.
You learn expansionary, too?
Yeah. All right, uh, it's too quiet, I would take about five, ten minutes, so if he gets his, or if he doesn't.
I think those things are almost over, though, in the mail.
Keep yourself, you see?
I mean, we're good in the field, but I have, you know, keep it down, I'm forty, I'm forty.
I thought you were the clerk. I thought you were the clerk.
I noticed you, we kept trying to track the heart, so. Okay. I might just keep seeing some pictures, I could have something else to fix. It might need a, it might need a little picture.
That's the Spielberg?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we're, uh, we're back, we have Miss Hippolyta. Here to talk about on page, I think it's page seven, my glasses back on. Page seven, uh, I'm Mr. Hippolyta, postage, you put fifty, you think that's it?
Yeah, Judge, I think that's, that's good.
Uh, fuel, eighteen hundred?
Well, yes, I mean, I know this shift probably gonna be a little bit less because what's going on, but actually, we've had it eighty for a while now.
Okay, that's the, uh, uh, office supplies?
Same thing, yeah, fifty, there's.
Machine maintenance?
I just put eight hundred, Judge, because that's going down to eight hundred, I think that would be enough.
Well, I know, and that maybe that's seven ninety-nine.
Okay, yeah.
All right, let's just go ahead and look if we can.
There you go.
Telephone, six oh one?
Yes, sir.
Your conference seminar days, we'll leave it at two.
Yeah, because that's, well, I'm gonna, I missed a bunch of them this year, I'm gonna miss a bunch of them this year.
Now, let me ask you, we have to make some up next year, or you know?
Yeah, I'll have to make some up, yes. Well, no, not really, because especially for my license, I'm gonna miss some, I've already missed some this year. But I'm okay, because I got till twenty, twenty-two to take, so I'll be okay.
Well, I'd say let's go ahead and keep that up to maybe twenty-five hundred.
Okay, sure, okay.
Something additional next year.
Okay.
Judge, I don't know, some of the stuff, they're gonna either forgive it, some of that, or not.
Well, that's true.
You know, the very last minute, because, you know, like on my stuff, they say we're still required. And they're putting it all on virtual.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
And some of these classes that I have to take for my license, they also put it out, you're gonna do it virtual, but it's a little bit higher. But one guy that I've got, he says, he's gonna have inline starting in September, or, you know, or, or he always has the classes.
Okay. But let's, let's go ahead and move that one up to twenty-five hundred.
Yes, sir.
Advertising, zero. Vehicle maintenance, your vehicle still good?
Oh, yes, sir, it's twenty sixteen, it's good vehicle, six hundred is.
Uh, radio, uh, we, we budgeted that for this year too.
Right, and we never did, I mean, it's never been, I just left it alone.
Let's, let's go ahead and try to, let's buy it this year.
Okay, that's fine, okay. So if it's that case, it will be zero.
Then, uh, let's take that radio maintenance back down to maybe two fifty.
Okay, that'll work.
Just in case you need.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, uh, fuel, help and maintenance, we'll give it back.
Okay, okay, sir.
About, uh, twenty-five hundred?
No, two, uh, two hundred fifty.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Because it shouldn't have anything, if it gets a new.
No.
Radio, it should be under warranty.
Right.
Just in case.
Right.
Needs an antenna or something.
And that's it, Judge.
Okay, no office equipment, everything's good?
No, everything's good, sir, everything's good.
All right again.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any questions?
Well, you bet.
I need to speak to a participant.
Oh, yeah, come on, Kenny.
Yeah, he's gotta go Amber Love and get, um, personal, we want to warn those, but apparently he's gonna have to have trade, all this stuff, and so he's having, he wanted to press it, he asked. Kenny was gonna, he got him going to the sixth, I just said, I'm still. Kenny, uh, on page eight, is the general fund non-departemental? We start on supplies, or?
Yes, sir.
All right, stockroom supplies. Twenty-two hundred, and they said, probably about seven hundred, so.
Do I do?
Uh, stockroom supplies, uh, we got budgeted twenty-two hundred so far, we spent about seven hundred. So maybe take that one back down to about two. First forward copier, thirty-nine hundred, we're at fifteen fifty-three, so we're not that far off, so let's leave it at thirty-nine. Subscriptions, zero. Miscellaneous expenses, we got budgeted two thousand. In twenty nineteen, we had five hundred forty-five thousand.
Wow.
For the rolling machines.
Is that what it was?
Part of my.
What?
The rolling machine?
No, that was for the, it was for the business part. The three hundred and six thousand, two hundred and ten, that we had to pay for at the end of the year. That's what came out of that.
Off-hops, seventy-five thousand. So far this year, we're at eighteen five thirty-five. In that thing, we were sixty-six thousand. So, you know, that's one of those you just never know. One and a half, so. Uh, let's put it seven. Hill County appraisal district, we got a two thirty-eight, year to date, we're at one fifty-four sixteen.
And that is the set amount, that's the amount that we contribute. So that amount of two thirty-eight is what, that was the information she sent us.
All right, two thirty-eight. Hill County, home U E C. That's a fifty grand again.
Mm-hmm.
Advertising, fifty-two hundred. We spent twenty-two fifty. What would that be like, uh?
Um.
FYI, or whatever.
Yeah, some of that comes out of there, and also, uh, like the postings and stuff that I did for here, the advertisement.
So fifty-two hundred, probably all later. It was forty-nine oh one nineteen.
Yeah.
Let's do that fifty-two hundred. Texas buying, making, uh, eighteen, six, nineteen, is that a set amount?
Yeah, this is where we did the revenue earlier, this is the expense, and they'll offset each other, so.
Eighteen, six, one, nine.
Yeah, but I think we, I think you upped that to twenty. Because like right now, I just, I don't know what that number's gonna be.
All right, let's put it. Okay, need to see marketing and incentive.
Now, this is just for the marketing and incentive part, and last year we all reduced it to twenty-five. So I left it at twenty-five, uh, my boss is gonna come and talk to you all about that again.
When did we start doing this?
Uh, we've done it the last two years, we started it in nineteen.
Let's give, uh.
Nineteen was the first year, and we paid fifty thousand the first year.
Yeah.
But for this year, we're on the.
Let's just leave it, uh, let's leave it at twenty-five, back to about. We'll just leave it at twenty-five. County dues, SPAG, Tennessee, and PAC, are those your set fees?
Yeah, there's, um, yes, sir, they're on, they're on different. Um, agency dues that.
I know SPAG, National Association of County, Texas Association.
The na, the not region district, it also comes out of that. Um, I think all of them.
Okay, what about the Texas National Resource? You wanna add? Put it on fifteen thousand? Yeah, she said they're pretty well set.
These are, this one is paid by the quarter, and. This is the Texas Commission on Infringement. But it's an onsite council fee, and we have to pay it quarterly.
Two hundred and six. Over registration, see? We got the fifteen hundred. It was thirteen, twenty-one, and nineteen.
Yeah, that one just depends on what, uh, it's the products at home.
Let's leave it.
Did y'all, um, county dues at fifteen?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. You said they were set.
Yeah, pretty much a lot of it's off.
Uh, he wanted physicals, we got, uh, we're budgeted twelve thousand, we're thirty-four fifty-six. In that thing, we were twelve thousand, two eighty-two. However, appointment numbers haven't been down, because no one is, is leaving. So our numbers, numbers are pretty saved, so. Anytime they're saved, our list seals coming down, because we won't be paying them for the good. What do you think about?
I think we're in a good place, well, I believe I am.
Continuancy fund. Fifty thousand.
You know, we all just said, oh, we're.
Great history. We're gonna hit seventy-five.
And that's. The amount that we'll have for this year, and we pay up the next three years, and the amount we pay this year will be five thousand dollars. And it is going up in twenty twenty-one to seventy-five hundred, and the last year is. It's twenty-five, ten, I can't remember exactly, but.
Thirty-three, seven thousand?
Mm-hmm, seventy-five hundred and seven.
Time, tiers?
Okay, the turds participation.
Oh, that's a season.
Yeah, and this is the one where it's that certain malaria, and.
Field, okay, so let's send down, and my county, as we will save.
Mm-hmm, I'm gonna need that a little bit.
Okay, I can.
I mean, that one is gonna depend on the amount that we're paid, and then we have to pay that.
Are you planning to, or taxes, or?
Yes, yes.
Unfortunately, taxes, yeah, that one. Okay, how'd you find this, the general fund account? I guess that'll be pretty well set. So, we'll leave that turd capped out. And my service rate is about. I understand. We need anger for you.
This one we need anger, we need to.
Get by Chan, uh, what about how you get letter?
Mm-hmm, this is on topic.
Okay, workers' compensation, we got sixty-five thousand, year to date, we're at forty-eight, seven forty-four. Uh, in nineteen, it was sixty thousand, one forty-one.
Now, this amount is going, is going up, but we all know exactly what it's going up to. So what they suggested, and what I had calculated was, um, that we take what this year is, and I think it was sixty-one eighty-eight, right, and then. They suggested to add four percent to that, so that's what we did there.
The seal is back? And unemployment insurance, we got seven thousand, cured by X, Y, and Z.
Well, Judge, can we go back to that one real quick?
Uh-huh.
That sixty-five that originally we put in, uh, when we got the information back, we might have got the letter back from workers' comp. Um, because our total for the whole year is gonna be sixty-one eighty-eight, isn't it, I?
On what?
On the, on the workers' comp. I might too, but I'll go up on it. So what I'm saying is, we, that needs to be seventy-one thousand, yeah, that's right.
Okay, go back to that one, like I said, we want. Picking up? Uh, that's, uh.
The workers' comp.
Need to get a.
Because they're estimating that there's gonna be a five percent increase, because at the end of this year. You got yours?
Captain, I did the math right here, you know, it's a quarter thousand, and it's two percent, and five percent, six percent, and seventy-five percent.
I mean, we pay that quarterly, but the invoice itself is six thousand, seven hundred, eight hun, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars for this year. And what they're suggesting is that there's gonna be a four percent increase on top of that amount, so.
Really like an eight percent increase?
Well, I mean, it's four percent for next year, but there's also a little bit of an increase this year that I'm probably gonna have to move in for.
So you take seventy-one, four, and eight.
Seventy-one and four, it needs to be. And we'll hope that they mishap away. But they're saying they're fifty of four percent increase.
Employment insurance, we're at seven thousand, we're budgeted seven thousand, we got nine eighty-four so far this year. Looks like in that thing, we were negative fifty, I mean, fifty-four hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Okay, Judge, on that one. Um, the last three years, we received a check, and if you'll notice, in nineteen, it's negative four sixty-one. That's an actual check that we, that we were actually, what we came. Team with all your minuses and pluses, I know that I received two checks, in eighteen, I received one, and then in nineteen, I received another one. And, uh, what it does is it takes the amount that we're paid, and then they send us the checks or credits that, so we came out that much in the black. In budget, the negative is actually positive, okay?
Okay, so we should lay it at seven?
Um, from when I'm, I've got projected here, uh, and in this year, uh, we received a check for, or we're going to, because I got a letter due this, due the seventeenth, that we issued a check. And we're gonna get one for thirty-nine, thirty-nine, thirty-nine eighty-six, we received it, we received it, okay, good. And so, that's with me challenging those unemployment, so we're actually doing good on unemployment. But, uh, the full amount for this year is going to be. It's going to be, uh, sorry, I lost my turn on that one. I got an estimated of seventy thousand, and I was hoping it would last, but I'm gonna say I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Okay, we must leave it at seven. Okay, uh, going down, the general and auto liability insurance, we budgeted a hundred and sixty, year to date, we're at a hundred and forty-one, five ninety-four.
That, the general liability, just we paid twice a year. And, and their year is not as a calendar year. I know that we paid, uh, just recently, we just paid a payment in July, actually effective July, end of the year. And, uh, it covers some of next year also, so it's not a calendar year, period.
So you've got one sixty.
So I think one sixty is probably going to do us, but I want to make sure we're living through that. Do you know that number?
One sixty, here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Public officials liability, we're at thirty thousand, uh, year-to-date, it's twenty-four seven. Is that one of those you just paid last year, but?
That's them annually, Judge. We, the rest of them, I believe, are paid annually. The only one is paid, uh, so that what you see is what it actually was.
Let's go ahead and do thirty. At one time, it was twenty-nine, six eighty, so. Law enforcement liability is fifty-five hundred. Uh, I'm sorry, fifty-five thousand. In that county, it was fifty-three. Year-to-date, it was forty-two. Let's go ahead and lay that fifty-five.
On the public officials, did you know that, I think?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, blanket bond insurance, three big blanket bond insurance, zero.
Yeah, and they actually covered that, that blanket bond, they put it in, folded into the, uh, they rolled it, rolled it into the, uh, oh. Sorry, the penal liability, so, so we're good.
Then, uh, sting board insurance, we're twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred. Complaints against Oak County, we'll let that ten. All right, page twelve. We want to have one. She's, she's third thing, a little late. Four ten, four white, or, you wanna do your call? Have you got a concept?
She does have a concept. Yeah, I have a concept, yeah.
Take me down, I'll go down. Take me through, I'll go down. Uh, page, uh, uh, page.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
And the judicial trial thing. Out of the general fund. All right. The first one, we got, uh, two forty-second, quarter point attorney, we're at ninety thousand. Year-to-date, we're thirty-seven, oh fifty-four. And that county, we were a hundred and something, probably how long that, ninety thousand. Sixty-four, let's leave it at nine. Uh, county court, let's leave it at sixty. Civil court appointed attorney, I'll check that. Oh, I'm sorry, that way I skipped, June, I, it's fifteen thousand, let's leave it there. Civil court appointed attorney space against one thirty-five, let's leave it there. Employers, SPICA funds review, topic, I just remember that. Retirement, we need to leave, leave it as time. Okay, uh, exams for hearing. We got that amount out, and so far this year, we're fifty-three, forty-five. So let's go ahead and lay that amount.
Yeah, yes.
I'll go ahead and, yeah, go ahead. Sexual assault, medical exam. We've had that at thousands, so let's leave it there. District Court reporter services, we're at ten thousand, year-to-date, we're at nine one thirty-eight. Why is that so high?
I mean, because of the.
Because I don't have a court recorder, I have a class. And I'm gonna have a, a month.
The transcripts kind of, the transcripts that we haven't paid them for, out of that.
Kind of, that's probably not enough in there. Let's put it up to fifteen. Mental commitments, we're at fifteen, we're year-to-date at, uh, seven ninety, let's leave it at fifteen. Extra court reporters, we got it at ten. Uh, year-to-date, it was fifteen sixty-seven. Is that what they probably like, claim that much?
Oh, mm-hmm.
Let's go ahead, let's leave it at ten then, because like I said, normally I have to have one at least once a month. If I have a jury trial, then I'm on. Yeah, let's play. I don't want to run into Strawn more. Special prosecutor, let's leave that.
The fans.
Pretty wacky.
Looking here.
You need a shield for the topic.
Huh?
Do a shield for.
So I kept thinking, where is this water?
Let's leave it at three. Interpreters, let's leave it at six. Investigations, let's leave it at a thousand. Public defender, over that one.
Okay, that is the regional public defender that we, for the region, if we have to call in a special.
Was it seven, eight?
Yeah.
So four ten, nine, forty nine.
Yeah, that contract is on a biennium, and this is the second year of it, so the rate stays the same.
All right.
Is it for capital murders? Yes.
All right, jury, criminal trial preparation, we have zero. Witness expenses, we have a five hundred. So let's leave that a five hundred. Uh, it's, uh, page eighteen, yeah. One hundred, that one, all. Electives, I guess, the first degree. Audits. You want that? Uh, creatures?
Judge, I, I'll do mine only because I can't change anything.
So you're the other there then? Who wouldn't want to change anything? You want to walk out of there? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Page, uh, twenty-three is robbery. Twenty-four is computer.
I won't get that one.
Non-departmental or general fund. The GAT.
The financial.
Yeah, the financial, external audit. Let me leave that four. Let's go, page twenty-five, page twenty-six is court hours, building and ground. Uh, the first item is janitorial supplies. We're at six four thousand. So forward, two thousand seventy-six, so let's take that for a thousand. Now, utilities, forty-six thousand. That's about right there, we're at sixteen ninety. In that county, we were at forty-one, so let's go ahead and do that for six. Building and ground maintenance. Uh, we're at forty-five. We're, uh, so far this year's at twenty, uh, thousand thirty-seven, so I guess we'll leave it at the same.
I bet those utilities are gonna be rough in the last, you know, month or two or three, ten, eleven hundred something degrees.
Now, the janitorial service, I'm assuming that's a flat plate placed on this, uh, contract?
Yes, it is.
Fifty-eight thousand, four sixty-five. All right, house canics, page twenty-seven. Utilities is at nine eight thousand. Probably all the way up there. Building and ground maintenance, point. What building does this cover? Like, rural and probation, juvenile probation?
Adult probation.
Everything, adult probation, rural.
Yeah.
Deborah and them. And, no, they're included with us. Juvenile included with it.
Surveying. Forty thousand, isn't it?
Now, that's where y'all have, you know, for this year, that, uh, y'all had talked about doing the windows over there in that morning.
And really, do you know right now, we're in the process of putting the flooring down there. Adult probation, and that loan is forty-two thousand dollars, we have to give it somewhere else. We need to put some money in that fund because we're gonna need something time to time. We always have to get the money somewhere.
Okay, so, so what do you think?
I would, I would suggest putting at least thirty thousand dollars in. That's not, as big of a deal to me, that's not much. Air conditioning, things go out, we take it, we always have to go find the money somewhere else.
Is that what you're gonna make?
Yeah. For, for courthouse, yeah.
Okay, page twenty-eight, the, the justice. Janitorial supplies, regarding this card business?
Yeah. Not this one.
I just say in the monitor salaries and stuff, I don't know. Janitorial supplies is at three thousand? That's about what we're at right now. Uh, utilities at twenty-two thousand. That's, it's currently at ninety-one twenty-two, so let's leave it at that. All right, here's another one, building and grounds and maintenance. We've had to replace two air conditioners in the last couple of years over there for walling. We've had to put in new compressor and stuff on, new fugles. You know, all those units were put in at the same time when the building was built. And so, I don't know how many's up there. But you would think, it's like a jail when we were out there. When you put them all up, they all quit about the same time. So we might want to add a little additional in there, so.
Now, what I do want y'all to remember also is that when, when we have to replace a unit, and if that unit is over five thousand dollars, that's a capital expense. And so that, a lot of times, that's why some of the things that y'all done, I've had to, we've had to take that out of permanent improvement. Because we have to, we have to put it in a line item where it's a capital expense. So.
So if we're gonna.
Like your maintenance, your building and grounds maintenance is just maintenance on different things. Um, it's not a capital expense.
Let's leave that at there, thank you. And then when we get to where we need to get to, I'm not even about that.
Right, and like, like over here, I, you know, not to go back right now, but, I mean, like on the courthouse annex, for instance. I mean, like your painting and things like that, it, it just depends on, but if it's an actual piece of equipment, that's what we have to keep in mind.
Over five thousand dollars.
Yes.
They got it.
Yeah, they got us. So that's why some of those we have to leave.
Well, let's just lay that at fifteen then, on building and ground maintenance. And then on janitorial, what's the set fee?
Yes, that's the, uh, amount. I mean, taking into consideration, just like on the justice center, or on the, uh, courthouse. Um, there was an increase that started in June of twenty twenty. And so that's why that's a little bit more. Those numbers are a little bit more for twenty-one because it'll be about a year.
All right, then page, which twenty-nine, director. Courthouse annex, boy.
This is the fortress building.
Yeah, let's leave that four hundred. Fifteen. Page thirty, the workforce. Okay, uh. You know, obviously, that's gonna get hard this year, I mean, for his disability. Uh, the workforce, I would think that's probably gonna be, uh, we just have to wait and see, you know, how that works out, so, I'd say, let's, uh, let's go ahead and leave. All of them. Well, the fuel, I'd leave the same. The other supplies?
That's where we pay for the meals, go to, in dates.
Probably would probably dial that back to about five.
Yeah, I think, I think about something else, but. Listen, on years of day, in years I've here lived, I, I, cases, a hundred each one.
Yeah, five years, so, and then like, so, you know, so much of what they can very often be dictated by Hansel. So, you know, how, maybe a little bit, come back for a whole year, I think, how that's gonna work, you know, that long, I don't think so. I'm thinking maybe staying, you know, so, that's why I'm a little, that's why I say let's cut it back to five, you know. The tail line, uh, is that like a set fee?
That's the cell phone that the, uh, the sergeant has for the, for the prisoner.
Oh, at some point, okay. Let's go ahead in case we, we do have one, that's a lot of problems next year. Uh, vehicle maintenance.
And that's the van.
We're not using it now, so. You do twenty-five? Yeah. What is it, that guy? He had a thousand, so it's worth it. Got that, page thirty. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not.
I know.
Thirty-nine. Break it up. Break it up. Anger and services?
Danger, that's not me.
I have services, so you know. Maintenance and power protection?
This is the bill we paid for this year.
Okay, we budgeted eighty thousand, so far this year we're still forty-four seven seventy-five. But I think that ten is the eighty-one. We couldn't, too high, I believe, the time. So, see the fire, we have, between the bridges and, yeah. We haven't had a building in all time, I think, before. Twelve-five for a figure, I'm having.
That's something.
Uh, figure bird twelve-five. Let's see, half a twelve-five. Emerson twelve-five. The sheriff twelve-five. And that was four. Yeah, three thousand nine hundred. Last and white, two hundred twelve-five.
Angel is so, I'm sorry, two fifty.
And with twelve-five. Sheriff, the border. Juvenile probation, this, the border. General fund, the summit said, ninety, city of ninety-eight, and, and about, so you get that. Definitely, yeah, and, definitely, yeah.
Forty.
It was forty, okay. Okay, and that one, what's this, thousand? South side, three ten hundred. South point, you know, west one? Four thousand. August, five, on those, two, two, two. Power is eleven, two feet.
This will be the second year of the payment, wherever it is.
West.
And then it'll be for ten year, I mean, a thirteen year, starting at twenty.
All right, uh, page, page forty-one, solid waste disposal. Avenue, solid waste disposal, two gigant. And solid waste planning back down. What is the solid waste plan? Sure, we've been, I don't have a ton, but I don't remember.
That's where we pay the south point's waste service?
For what?
For the. Well, yeah, some of it, um, but it's for the, one of them is for the pickup, and one of them is for the. This one is where we pay for the, the south point's waste, and where we pay for the, uh, those four containers that we pay for. And that's what the, uh, four seven two two is. And then the other one is the.
Where's the forty nine?
They're out there at.
Twenty-four five.
Yeah. Precinct fours, inside precinct fours. And the other one. This is actual pickup of the. Cause it's four hundred dollars a week. I think that's where we pay that, I don't know. Oh, and what the rain was talking about, we have to pay for a lot. Yeah, this is the recurring, uh, the four hundred dollars is recurring monthly, uh, for the sanitation service. But we also have to pay eighteen dollars a month for a lot that is out at, at what. Yeah, we didn't know what that was, so I had the rain find out who we were paying for. And so that's what it is. We pay for the, there's a building out there that has not been used, I guess. They said we could connect to it, but.
Forty about, you know, how age, I don't know.
Um, forty-two.
Forty-two. Any healthcare solutions? Is that part of the?
This is her, uh-huh, there's a contract.
So that's a set fee?
Uh-huh.
Point out. Building hospital foundation?
We don't do that.
Hell County Hill on Wheels?
This is the cell phone.
Have any that we set up, can we do this?
I don't know, sir.
Health care, child welfare, services, that. Central veins, U H M, thirty-six, oh, oh, five. Medical and healthcare?
And that is, uh, yeah, her medical, no, she does.
Just want to have that. City and Tony Health Care?
That's health care.
Hell County House is soon, uh-huh. Psych program, not that. Parents' place is not that. Roll fair assistance program?
This is for like anyone that comes to Abraham and wants these help that he told us.
Funeral, we budgeted five, we've already spent seven. And that thing was spent seventy-seven hundred. So. I don't know, at least, put it at least seven.
You think that's predictable?
Y'all, once again, this year has had an effect on, on who's spending so far. Hell County senior citizen, or is that, yeah, Hell County senior citizen, ninety-five hundred. Aberneth, the senior citizen, eight thousand. Hell Center, eight thousand. Figure bird, eight thousand. Viper, you know, eight, you know? Teladot, sixty-eight hundred, is that a set fee?
I don't know, compared to the.
Cause so far this year, we've spent four thousand four hundred forty-four hundred.
I think that is, I don't know.
Let's put it at sixty-eight hundred, or something. You guys been using, I've used it this year. And I've used it before at work school. I would think more people would use it this year than try to stay on as a doctor, doctor.
Two state hundred, I'm gonna collect all those ones.
Okay, and, uh, the next one is, uh, cars. The next one is devils. Uh, library and museum. I'd say this is really all the same. Can you, question, can you, yeah?
I'm sorry.
I would say it's good. And extension, they're coming. All the ones here. General fund transfers?
No, no, these are, um, the transfers I'll do from, um, these different funds. Home improvement, economic development. Most of them stay the same, but you'll probably just say that when you get to fund the general fund. So, that, that number is subject to change.
So we don't need to go into the budget?
Depending on, I just input it up, because it's depending on what you do when you get to fund the eleven lot, the next bunch.
Okay, number eleven hundred, page forty-nine, is, uh, zero, one more permanent improvement, revenue? Has a one, zero, interest on investments, you got twenty-two hundred. Year to date is eleven hundred, so let's put, year to date, twenty-two hundred. Carryover, zero. Transferring from the general fund, so, this is where we wanna add some money to the after.
Uh, not, not here, cause this is the revenue, but you do it up here. Yeah, and it will change that revenue amount, because then we'll increase what goes in from.
Yeah, my show page fifteen hundred. On the permanent improvement expenditure, building and ground maintenance, we have a hundred ten. Is that for all buildings, or?
No, this, that one is for the courthouse, so anything that you're gonna do that would be a payment improvement, like when we did the parking lot, that came out of here.
Year to date, mine's only showing eighteen fifty-eight.
Right, because that's how we spend. I mean, that's all we've spent so far, but.
Probably some home, because of this coat.
Yeah, I mean, like, I think they're supposed to do the rest of the parking lot this year. Like, from the back end, all this backside, and that would come out of here.
And let me ask you this, is this where we get the money to pay for like the street improvement out there on the broadway?
Yes, it's a, it's a huge possibility, yes, if you decide to do, you're gonna wanna budget it here.
Okay.
We told you very much, well, what?
Is thirty-five?
Thirty-five, six thousand.
I thought it was twenty-six.
I saw something there.
It was a lot less than they first projected.
They talked about Monday in court, well, when they first projected, they didn't talk about in the law, where.
Yeah, that was a hundred thousand.
Yeah, just to do broadway, this time I don't care.
I said it was thirty-six thousand, I don't know.
I think that's something we've gotten.
Thirty-six, I think, I'll have to look it up.
They gave us just for that one side? At thirty-six? They were talking about that one side? So, you know, this side?
We, we did decide to work on the, the rest of the parking lot, or we haven't yet, don't know if it was real. We may talk about that, and see if we wanna go ahead and finish this year. It's not, it's not in bad shape as what we did, and it's not as large an area, but, you know, we're beginning what we've been, we need to start it on.
My understanding, in visiting with Jeffrey, I wouldn't hear any change Monday, but, uh, what he's talking about would be for next year.
Yes, it would, it would be.
We could pull, because that's what we decided to do next year, you know, which pulls from that one two minute, adding thirty-six thousand, I think.
Yeah, it, I mean, in y'all's, you may still budget the same amount, so.
Yeah, we should be.
You may not have to budget additionally.
So is there anything that we know that we need to, cause we haven't spent, but I think, fifty-eight so far this year.
Well, and there again, if we go ahead and do the rest of the parking lot, it's gonna blow up quite a bit, uh, I don't know if that's.
I know this side over here was, I'm gonna round up, it's, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna round up, it was a little more than eighty thousand. So, when y'all, I know when y'all talked about doing the rest of it, we were thinking, I mean, it could be anywhere from forty to sixty. It's just gonna depend on.
I think it'll be, I think, I'm pretty sure it'll be less than fifty.
Well, there's some things that, I mean, obviously, look around the corner, let's, let's go ahead, it's very hot, let's talk about him and.
Okay.
Then we can, I have a problem now, so.
Oh, my gosh, that's even the anxiety happening at my office.
I'm nervous, so, we're not, we're not, we're not. Okay.
I like it better than this.
Just a heart.
I do. You got a dry heat out here down there?
Yeah, I do.
I kept looking at thinking, oh my gosh, the whole ceiling's gonna fall down on me.
I'm a whole lot more than these, than I am that, because. What's that new straw? So, we, next door, that's.
Yeah.
That was the installation of the. That was LaDre's, uh, glass. In the.
It's getting close, yeah.
And.
It's still moving.
Oh, yeah.
Huh, it's still moving tires out, over there? Nope, we're waiting on a trailer to come in from, uh, Wilkins, they're getting them fixed. We're gonna take it, then we're gonna start the transfer service. Thinking about taking it before we might do the piece of, do, do I, thinking about taking it in the strip, you know, the piece of, please. Somebody just took something on my camera, you know, I don't know. I got a tape in the picture from that, the other night, somewhere out there in Redwood, dealing with like forty tires, dumped in the ditch. Yeah, or on like, west county, or the example, did every time, I don't know. Certainly have a camera out there, yeah, you know, batteries on those things, you know, is that traffic, there's more traffic? That's one of those deals you can't, you just. We used to do, tried to do that, when, is it the sheriff's office? We had a, you know, pretty effective thing for the area, we tried to, you know, put cameras up, and, 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 consult. You couldn't tell.
I don't know, but I don't remember.
I don't know, it seems like I'm on a tape. It's on the last up here.
Yeah, I don't, because we talked about downstairs.
That's all, sometimes that's all.
I mean, I made sure it was in your straight camera, but I didn't know it.
Hey, we're on page, John's page.
Fifty.
Fifty, we're talking about permanent improvement.
Under eleven.
Under eleven. And we talked about, uh. And we talked about, uh, we have a hundred and fifty thousand in there for this year. We spent eighteen fifty-eight, which we're gonna spend more than that because she said this was for Latrice's last. So, we're having expenses for. Is that here? The, well, the mine and Sharon's last out of here.
Well, now y'all, I think, came in with budgets because you didn't request for it to pay out. But it's coming.
Yeah, hopefully we can make that.
I was gonna say, is there any chance we will?
Yeah, hopefully we will, so. But what I was gonna, the reason I sort of held off on talking about this after the break is, we need some stuff done here at the courthouse. I mean, we, we don't need, I'm not talking major facelifts and stuff, but we need, just like these ceiling tiles. That has broke, and they're not as broke because they're broke, they're like the compensation, train, the leak, and, uh, you know, this deal here is gonna be a hazard. I don't know how that ceiling beams hide up in there.
She's probably, it's probably wired to over beans, you see.
We got the baseboard there in the basement, and it's done loads, I mean, we just got lots of. And, and, yeah, cosmetic and, but the problem is, we don't have a resource to, who do you call? To do this type of, you know, the compensation stuff, you know, we all are a HVAC person, but, you know, like that, sell that in the basement, so. I mean, it's just a general maintenance deal, and.
What was there in the basement?
The baseboard, uh.
Full walls?
The panel, like a floor board, and stuff is all kind of done. That, that deal is, I had walls all laid up, you know, over there by the wall. It looks like somebody has kicked it, but I really think what happens is, they go up that ramp with the, with the alley that's right here. And they don't have a corner to get it and stuff, so, I mean, like I say, it's nothing that. I mean, we have lots of things that we could do here, but, I mean, just for general safety and cosmetic appearances, we need to, to be able to do something. And see what we're, uh, looking at, so. I, I said that to say this, don't be surprised if this next few months, if we, if y'all see some of those expenses, if y'all can help and find somebody that would be willing to do that type of work, then.
I think that might help.
Because we got quite a bit of money left on our issue of budget.
You know, sitting in town, you can go buy the coins, you can buy a pack of them, stick them in the storage deal as you need to, like that one.
Well, actually, we think those are under contract with the janitorial service. But there's no reason for them to re, put the ceiling tiles up if there's an existing problem as to why the, the right somewhere to do.
Well, we could, we could go out, pack them, and put them in the storage, but it's, it would be, they're gravel, and just stick them in there.
But, you know, like I said, just general, uh, maintenance issue, we need to, we got some things we need to do on that, and. And then, you know, of course, long term, we, we need to look at, maybe doing some work here at the courthouse, you know, some painting. Maybe looking at the flooring and, and things like that, but, you know, as of right now, though, if we could just get some of those minor repairs, big stuff, that would help us. Let's lay that at a hundred ten. Renovation of Annex One building, we got that at nine thousand. Year to date, we've spent fourteen seventy-five, and in nineteen, we spent thirty-five thousand.
This is where the flooring for, um, has the, uh, adult probation, it's gonna come out of here.
So, we're gonna have to do something.
We're gonna have to do that.
So, what do y'all think as far as for next year, do we leave that at nine, or we need to raise it? What, what needs to be done on this, Kenny?
Well.
Just out of hand, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Well, of course, been concerned about the winded tramp treatments on it, you know, the glasses in there do some little wood strength, and we know they're deteriorating rock, and they need to be replaced, and painting, things like that, and then, uh. Does air conditioning and stuff come out of this too?
It does, depending on the dollar amount, like, like the, uh, that's what some of that is, the.
That's what I'm getting at, it's what for.
To redo that, uh, knowing that was, I thought it was.
Well, you know, Kenny, this is for, talking about that capital alley, do, cap, actually, this is big, uh, to, like the.
Like the roof repair, the roof repair and to replace the two gas furnaces, that's what came out of here.
You know, nine thousand dollars is just not very much money for that kind of building, you can't do really anything to it.
What we ever do?
I mean, if they're air conditioning them now, and it was over five thousand dollars, it would happen to come out of here.
Uh, where would we put that thing?
I put, I put, I, I had twenty-five in my, do you guys feel like that'd be appropriate? It's not very much money for that one.
He said he had, y'all wanna split the difference?
Man, if you go out to square.
Let's do thirty-seven five.
Yeah, that, that, that would help a lot, uh, give us a little money.
Now, you know, one thing, uh, if the juvenile probation moves, like they're anticipating movement. One of the things I thought we might consider doing is moving Carla and Deborah over here.
Would they be in a better place over there?
I think they would, uh, because they have, I think, lots of issues back where they're at. You know, that paving over there is sort of slanted and everything, and lots of the clients that they deal with, uh, have struggled with some of those. That uneven pavement and the broken pavement, and trying to get in their offices and stuff.
Would they just, you just looking at Carla and, and Deborah?
As of right now, I don't know about Paul, you know? But it would make it a lot easier on their, their people to be able to park over here and go on the round and forward. Now, that's the thing, that both of them would need to be on the ground floor because of, uh, their clientele. With that building not having a habit, so.
Keep that small.
And then renovation of law enforcement center, you know, that hundred eighty thousand, we spent sixty-five, seventy, you know. That's just, you know, some years that's not enough, and some years.
Too much.
You know, I don't wanna say it's too much, I, I'd rather have it there with Nigga than not have it, with Nigga there, so. But let's, let's lay it at a hundred eighty. Renovation of juvenile probation building, uh. Let's put, uh. Harold, if we needed to put a ramp on that step in front, how much would you figure? Over here, if we don't move them over here, we might put a, a ramp there.
I guess you're looking, looking, close to a thousand dollars, because you probably could be concrete, or a pole.
Let's, let's put about five thousand in there. Uh, renovation of Olive Anderson. Let's lay that at five. Justice Center. Is this where we would need to put like air conditioning?
It looks like it would be good.
We did, uh, in eighteen, like, all of that was, was we did this stuff all about the garage doors over there, we painted, uh, we painted the facing. Most of that was paint over there. For the outside.
Yes.
And then my window, mine glass, wanting it out?
Oh, it will come out this year, but we haven't gone on a deal yet.
What was that one?
When Carla does her office.
When they did the glass on the counter.
Yeah, we, I just haven't seen that deal yet.
What did Jeff just cut out of your thing?
Um, now Carla's will because she requested it. No, theirs will come out of, yeah.
All right, then, uh. Without this thing or without air conditioning?
But like, uh, in twenty nineteen, oh no.
And this is where they're supposed to come out, I mean, definition that August, I guess, that's where it has to come out.
Yeah, I mean, if you, like, we did a, an air conditioner unit, and so it has to come out of here because it's over five thousand dollars.
How much was wrong with?
If I put it in, uh, the courthouse, and rebuilding grounds maintenance, the, when we're auditing, they're gonna let me move that to a capital alley.
So, those units are about sixty-eight hundred.
Because I think he's got another one, and, and I think I had one, and then there. I don't think they've replaced a unit between the two judges, but they're gonna have to work on it because the two forty-second courtroom controls the temperature to the jury room and all out there where they wait for the jurors, where the jurors are. And they, we've had that guy come over, Bennett, uh, whatever his name is, Bennett?
Chad, yeah.
Yeah, Chad, and he's looked at it, and I told him, I said, you need to, you know, figure out what it costs because when the jury goes back there, the judges close their courtroom, so that turn the air off, and it cooks the, cooks or freezes the jurors, so. You know, we need to kind of figure that in too, I don't know, he never gave us a price, so I don't know what kind of.
I know Kenny's talked to Wally about preparing Judge Uhl's.
Yeah, Judge Uhl's.
And, uh, well, Wally and I called her, I'm, Wally, you go ahead and buy one from Caprock.
Williams did it, he repaired Judge Uhl's, yeah, like two weeks ago.
Okay.
And so, but what I'm afraid of, you gotta have a unit down, I guess, maybe an ag expansion. But I would think that would be separate. The big jury room, like we do juries. Is that the one you're talking about, the judges control that?
No, that has its own controls, isn't it? In fact, there's two controls.
So, you're talking at least three more units that we know of?
Yeah.
And so.
How long ago did Wally have this done, just recently?
Yeah, about two weeks ago. This one I was saying.
You never did it?
Caprock was gonna do it.
Caprock did it, and then I think Williams worked on, doesn't he?
He's probably having a deal from Caprock.
I don't know, there either one of them, maybe.
Who worked on the, um, Judge Uhl's?
Mario Williams.
Still sixty-eight.
They just took the pressure off.
That's what I'm saying.
So, who do we need to call, Chad or that?
For, for who's?
Any of them.
Anyone you get, obviously, uh, if they, they're all covered up, and Chad's been really, he's good at board, but he's hard to get around there, I'm pretty sure he'll. And he's not doing much commercial stuff, so. Probably realistically, Williams or Caprock probably is what's shot.
Let's go ahead and put twenty-five thousand in there.
Okay.
Just, that about, at least three in itself. I mean, there might be some other maintenance issue or improvement issues that need to do that.
That is, the metal detector went out over there, and that's it, we've gone through all of them, you know, they're all out. And I didn't know where that would come out of.
I think that comes out of the security.
Security, okay. If y'all could just remember.
But how much did that happen there?
But I don't remember how much that are, because we're down. We have none up there now, we had four, and now none up more.
There about three, I look on that deal I have, it's like we can't divide, break, almost says about thirty-six hundred. All right, that's, uh, Annex Building Three, I guess it's the forges, we have that one back in there, so I guess that's good. Renovation of JP Three building, we have fourteen thousand in there, she spent forty-one coming back so far. What's your guess?
I don't think it's time, you're talking minus a hundred. Remember I said about, you had that thousand, no? Was that the carbon here, or the flooring, or some sign that she wanted, or she was.
That, the forty-one twenty-nine is for her HVAC system, her, her issue down.
That one was signed to.
The Markey sign.
Now, that, that, that she wants to pay for out of her, uh.
Technology.
Technology, technology fund, her fund fifty-nine. And she has it back on this year also.
So, should we lay that at fourteen?
Yeah, in twenty nineteen, it was for her flooring, and we also did a HVAC heating system in twenty nineteen.
It's a nice leap to leave it, because, you know, she might have a problem with well or something.
Twenty nineteen, though, she, it shows a negative, negative seventy-eight.
Yeah, I know, it showed that because I made requests that I saw.
Okay, so let's lay the fourteen. And then precinct four building. I'm assuming this is just a building she have at precinct, that's our concept, you have it? I'm gonna spray it on my. Kenny, is that Mario over here?
I did. Yeah, I did have one, but I did like the roof one here, and back here.
Okay, and, uh, Mario, the alarm. The next page, fifty more, the economic development, uh, in, figured revenue. So, the interest was one twenty-five. Uh, transfers of the general fund was twenty-five thousand.
Are you gonna link it at one twenty-five?
Yeah. It's the twenty-two year today. The most is that we did nine hundred. I paid fifty-two. It's the state here. Forty-five.
That twenty-five, that's for.
This is for like the.
That's why it's the money like we used part of last year, if Abby had the help on, value of emergency generator, fire department.
Okay, so the twenty-five will leave you off. All right, jury, is that the cards?
Yes.
Jury. Didn't have any jury, I thought.
Not many at all.
Rural fire protection, probably about eighty.
Fifty-five.
Yeah, believe it, two ninety. In writing. Uh, fire protection, expenditures, that's where we put that money.
That's for Harold Todd's partner, huh?
That's what, that's the thousand. That's, uh, that's the arrangement for the rural fire, whenever anyone needs, uh, park pump, you know, yeah. Would that be badge and funds, yeah? Okay, let's lay the ten. All right. Next page. Golden Bridge. Logan Bridge. You see that one?
I don't know. I might wanna skip it for the party and so we can come back to it.
Alright, the next one, we run three. About the notch, it's width control and shoulder. You see that one?
I mean, you've got the revenue and then you've got two pages that are extended church.
We're, we're.
So I'll, I will skip them for now. We'll come back to that after we do this.
Order up the page, sixty?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, precinct one. My. You're in here, Eric? For next year's, that's what it was.
The only thing was he took out the, uh, bond.
What?
Your bond. He took it out.
Oh.
For twenty twenty-one?
He's got a fifty dollar in it.
I don't say it, that's too big. Yeah, but next year I have to redo my bond. Oh, that's your revenue, I'm sorry. I'm on the revenue portion. That's always been, I think, yeah, I think it's two fifty is why it goes in there. But your revenue and expenses are all the same. Except for the bond.
Now, do you want the bond back in here?
No.
Okay, you have to.
So put twenty-two in there, the bond. It looks like some, the rest is like. Okay, first thing, you're so budgeted.
Well, it's gonna go back up to seven hundred thousand, seven nineteen.
Seven nineteen, okay. Okay, precinct two, revenue. How that time change thing, I walked out now, I need to, I want to talk, I need to change it. My wish was like it's the same as it is for the past. Okay, so, no changes on precinct two, revenue, or.
Now, the only thing on yours more now is that you, you, um, you budgeted the bond for twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I have to. So when you type it out?
No, no, it needs to stay in there, but that's the only difference.
Yeah, people will have to.
He had it last year.
So could it have?
Could be.
Let's say you gave it just so that all did the same. Okay, you have that one. Number three? Number three will also be the same. Did you add, did you maybe add all of?
Well, he, he did, he just left it at two hundred.
I, I'm, I'm. Same. Pretty much same now.
Kenny, why she makes a little question?
Kenny? Yours is the same?
Uh, well, I had some changes because I didn't have the, uh, what I bought that maintenance.
He didn't have the carryover in his revenue?
Is it for the revenue?
Page sixty-seven. Yeah, I started new where we had that to do in twenty twenty, we budgeted two hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred. He won't have that. He won't have that in twenty twenty-one. So I think everything else.
I will tell you about that, thank you.
Now, he did.
I will have, uh, about that. I have thirty-seven one thousand. Seventy thousand. So his revenue went from eight oh one, zero fifty to fifty times five, seventy-one twenty-two.
On his, on his interest for investments, he changed it to a thousand.
Okay.
Instead of twelve hundred.
And he, uh, sells the COVID. The thousand.
Yes. And I think that's all of them, yeah, except the, the transferring is gonna change because of his expense.
His expenditures. No, I was trying to say, I'd say, sell five for that, and I keep it for the bond. Seven hundred.
Oh, he wanted to increase it from a hundred to two fifty?
Oh, that. From the bond. Everything else is the same. You said your equipment going back to a hundred thousand, is that gonna be enough or what?
Yeah, we, uh, essentially didn't have five when I arrived, we just traded that one and it's gonna be seven thousand difference. I've been a little extra money, initially, we had five trackers.
But that's what he's covering.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's repairing, he telling him he did twenty-five hundred?
And we can get a return, seven.
Yeah, he traded with that.
Yeah, that's what I.
He didn't, he didn't notice everybody. And the difference was that was exactly, we've been trading for a little more, but I think.
No, that's what he quoted me was at seventy thousand.
But the maintenance you're trading point had all the bills listed, you remember? And, uh.
From, uh, TD to Chief.
Yeah, that's why.
But it's giving you a hundred thousand.
Yeah, so you have one getting a less, because yours is a TD.
Thirty, seventy thousand.
And you're, are you fixing that one?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, yours is.
I did not.
Yeah, I'm fixing that one.
Um, Carla, I think thirty-two is your, should be that one. What exactly, thirty-two is your?
Okay. Okay, the, the general services program?
That's one.
Four? Part, uh, take out services, well.
Thirty, thirty-five.
Part five, six.
Thirty, seventy-three through eighty are the trips.
Seventy-three. All this business. The reg, regular management.
Calvin Carter.
Former T C B, regular management presentation.
And four days is, uh, the base from, uh, public. Eighty-eight. Airport three sixty. Fifty-three, the law on there will be Carl.
Core house security.
Core house security.
Will be that one? Okay. The revenue, that must have stayed the same. What were you at?
Page ninety-one, and it's the fifty-five.
Thirteen, there, there, now the thirteen person here. Is, uh, revenue is all the same?
I left them all the same.
The unit rates not too often, I guess, so it's just labeled all the revenues, it's labeled all the same. Fifty-five hundred, three thousand. Twenty-nine. Forty-five. A thousand. Fifteen hundred. Interest will leave it at a hundred. And, uh, the next one, she's. Expenditures, uh, we have seventeen thousand. Unit rate, do you just say that one copy a year or?
Um.
The only reason I'm asking is if you still got money in there, I'm guessing. Metal protector.
Do you compensate the payers to care the courthouse, so it's more harmful? Do you compensate part of the payers salary? And that became long time long parking, like, night. Or we budgeted, like, that amount, we don't, and we don't do that anymore because.
Do we still have the seventeen thousand in there?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we don't.
Let's lay with the same.
Security here.
Yeah, right. Let's lay with the same, and I'll talk to David about getting on the agenda to buy. Sell that.
A replacement metal detector for the justice, and out of this year, but.
Out of this year, but.
How much is something like that for?
There, I'm looking at the right, the point, he can spend, you know, five, so.
That was the limit?
I wanna say he could probably replace the one couple in the one we had over five thirty minutes.
I mean, last year, y'all did, in twenty nineteen, we dealt a lot of things, I mean, because we had trouble with the cameras. Um, the alarm, false alarm zone, I mean, there were different things that we paid for.
We always kinda need some extra money in security for all the ones, for the cameras that go out.
Yeah.
Because we did the DVR, so every camera that goes out will be a different, it has to be a different camera.
Well, we didn't spend any this year anymore, let's see, does that mean that'll be up for next year? And if you see any things that we maybe, maybe put in the last quarter of this year. Uh, spend that this year money in the last.
Are you thinking about doing a metal, you know, like courthouse here?
You know, we need to talk about that at the city conference, after COVID, we're gonna. When we got the bond, we pass it to.
I seen, I seen one, I, I.
You know, there's something you can find though to, first of all, we'll have to find out how much, and if it's possible to, those first floor doors to be at, uh, open, could be locked, but be open accessible from inside for emergencies. Uh, and I don't know if that's possible or not, you know, the way they're built, because we had actually two separate locked doors. And so, uh, I guess we need to see, would you do that? I do like, and I, I think it's a good security and plus everybody's sort of got used to it now. You just want to clear that bottom floor. Uh, and we could buy a metal detector. If you do something like that, we probably need to create some type of security station, ready to just have them rather than test. So, you know, uh, I don't know, we can do some type of structure, at least some type of podium, you know, uh, more permanent. Well, a little more security for them, you know, and, uh, a little more.
Do you think we'll still be doing it that way even next year, maybe with things more normal?
Well, that's what I was saying, I think this might be a good time to up our security here. By, uh, finally letting everybody do that one door for those two doors, the basement.
In the basement.
But in order to do that, we, because of accessibility, we're gonna have to get those first floor doors, uh, where somebody, if you're in an emergency, you open them.
It's that armbar from?
We have to give you those armbars or.
On the north end and the south end?
I would lay all great, you know, I may put the existing doors there, uh, the fire marshals are required in, all of them. Being accessible, so, but, uh, like I said, that's. We all really know, and I could handle it, so. What were you looking at?
I'm just looking to see what that, so that that was a reclassification for the asset. On twenty nineteen, that's the amount.
Alright, then let's go to page ninety-three.
The matches is there.
Go into the.
That's just.
Sixty-five, twenty.
That's JP one.
Technology, top third, ninety-five, the first. Ninety-six is ten. Ninety-seven is ten.
That's gonna be, uh, oh yeah, nine eight is gonna be, uh, changed.
Nine eight is Sharon. Nine nine is Sharon. One hundred is Sharon. Product construction now.
This is the bond. But we won't have the money under.
And, uh, bond?
Yes, that's.
Expensive. Uh, the, uh, product construction, you know, and then the. That's, uh, what I, I'm gonna do.
Wonderful, and this is the, uh, this is the bond payment. So this is the amount, the add-on bond is the amount that is, and there's a certain percentage, uh, that percentage is included in our add-on.
So that's a seven.
Mm-hmm.
Four forty-two, forty-five. This is a year of five?
This will be a year of five, yes.
It's a seven year?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the interest will say two forty-five?
Um. Yeah, I left it there, I was, I was hopeful.
Okay, two forty-five. Okay, the next page is, is expenditure part?
Yes, and that shows the principal.
Principal note and how you think.
Yeah, each, and every year at the end of the year, usually in December, is when we pay that, we get a deal for that entry. And I feel to begin in twenty twenty-one. But that's the principal note and then we'll have, um, two, I mean, one of the interest payments is paid in February with the note and then in, uh, August, I make the other interest payment, well, we paid each month. Like, I've already made it. I'll pay it last Friday.
Okay, so those are all fixed numbers, they're all stay the same. We're done. There we go. Apparently, we're gonna call it, and, and dress, and, could that break, will we? Okay, let's, uh, let's just look back to the, uh, part tomorrow. Long time tomorrow. The first guy, we start in the morning, with Dave. Dave Silva, and Jim, and Clark, Sharon, Lawley. And we have Wright, and we have the Crays on Zoom. We have Robert. And Karen, David, and we got one, and the sheriff at M thirty. Benny Garcia at two. Stacy Hardy with two fifteen. Carla, two thirty. And Deborah, and three fifteen.
Who else is in Zoom? They're only for the three's. You think we could talk to them and do them tomorrow? Cause I'm, I won't be here on, uh, Wednesday, that morning. I'll be here after lunch. Are they doing it after lunch?
Actually, Wednesday's a big day on, uh, there's Republic doing her at nine, Andrew's at ten thirty, and Craig's at one thirty.
Okay, all three of those are Zoom?
Yes. And then we have the Crays.
Maybe if we could talk, uh, talk to them and see if they'll do it tomorrow?
Now, Dana, Dana and I have visited, she has no changes.
Right.
She said she was good with not coming at all.
Yeah, if the court needed, I think, I'd have told, told them.
We would change something in her budget, then we would call her. Uh, and so, uh, you might call.
I can call them.
We might call Andrew and Craig, and make the, you might make an offer as to if they're not changing anything, and they don't want to do it, and don't have to.
Yeah, Andrew didn't have any changes either, and I remember that, but Lorraine just reminded me that, um, so I can check with both of them, and if they're okay, then we don't have to contact them unless y'all have a question.
Well, Deborah's sure three fifteen mark, and so if they want to, is there, why don't we schedule them for three thirty, three forty-five mark?
Well, I'll call, I'll, we'll call those two, um, see, and if they're good, no Zoom, then.
Time changes, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, let's look, uh, let's just look at everything that we have on Wednesday. The thing that we're counting, and we're gonna start from nine fifteen, and we got nine to five.
Oh, it's supposed to be Fox.
The Fox, this is Fox, we have Run Hackett, uh, we've already done David Hippelito. And then if we do Andrew, uh, then we have Terry Kemp's at eleven fifteen, and Carla at one forty-five. And then Marshall McPrenon, uh, got county health insurance Wednesday, at three fifteen.
And there's nothing else.
Yes, so who, who all is Wednesday morning?
Wednesday morning is Dana's gone, and Mike Fox.
Andrew's gone.
Brent, and Hippelito's done. Uh, Andrew, if he doesn't come.
Just lacking for you.
Terry Kemp's at eleven fifteen.
Okay.
And then on Thursday, we don't have anybody set up to come, which is, and order on Friday. And then, so hopefully, hopefully, the next couple, uh, days, looks like Wednesday after two, then we can sit down, we'll have to mail with everybody, except the insurance people. And so we can sit down and go back through everything and see what happened. And Thursday, we'll do that, and it's, or it's just to try to go back and, and talk about it.
I mean, just keep it in mind, but I won't have the certified codes yet, so I won't have anything to.
And without the numbers, it's pretty hard to go. Without the numbers, it's hard to go through, I mean, we've done that today, and we can look at.
Yeah.
Now, and I guess I can go ahead and talk about this as it's running, providing, but, um, right, and money, and the agenda. We received a, a letter, uh, from PAC, that is talking about the cause of COVID and disaster declaration that, that removed us from the restraints of Senate Bill two, but it's not required to do that. And so, talking in general, uh, we need to discuss that and decide what we wanna do as the commissioners' court. Uh, just because we say that, uh, we wanna purge and go back up to eight percent, doesn't make it go up to eight percent. You know, but it is an option, I mean, but, you know, I think we need to pay. And, uh, especially, you know, we try to be free to revenue, but especially with all that's going on, and we don't know what's gonna happen.
You know, how it's gonna affect the revenue.
And so, like I said, uh, you know, my, my deal is, we, we, I need to look at that option, and decide what we wanna do, and then try to keep it as close to the best as we can. Does anyone have anything else to ask for, we, we reset, right, we're on the ground. So does anyone have anything, for the night? I know we've gone over a lot. Okay, Melinda, tell me, I forgot to go back to your numbers.
Oh.
What you were telling me, uh, right?
Um, apartment four on the line.
What, uh? Four in the line?
Yeah, it's page eight.
Okay, and I see.
I'm not, I'm page eight.
Page eight?
I'm not, I'm at the line.
Now, you're talking now?
Uh, I think that's it, um.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's on page two.
Two?
On page two, and it's the revenue. And it's under, uh, miscellaneous refunding revenue? What page, I'm sorry?
Page two.
Page two.
Starting with those two.
Yeah.
We raised it to sixteen thousand. Melinda was telling me we need to leave it at that. We may leave it, leave it at that.
I think you better be conservative, because, like, like we said, I mean, there ended up being more in there this year because of the timing when we crossed years, uh, because the, the money we received in, before, it was for December, but we didn't receive it until April. And so, it crossed years, so it has to go, it can't go back into that, that budget, those budgeted line items, it has to go in here. But you're not gonna have that every year. I mean, that was kind of a fluke, that just, that's just gonna be, ended up getting the payment. I didn't, I mean, I billed it out before I closed out the year, but we didn't receive it until after. So, thinking that you might get more money, you might not. I mean, I, I think it's better that it's.
Let's try to get back to, uh, to you. Okay, well, if there's nothing further for today, then we'll stand and judge until nine eight, and recess, and, uh, recess? Recession. Yeah, recession, until nine nine, right, tomorrow. Okay, thank you. Thank y'all.